Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, December 3, 2015, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. All members are present and a quorum has been established. Is there anyone who expects to speak before the commission today? Just raise their hands and just do you solemnly swear to tell the truth to the planning commission as you know it? Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes. Anyone have any additions or revisions, things that they need to address?
I made a few revisions already.
They're reflected in this, right?
They are reflected in this document. And regarding the University Estates and the type of pipe, the city maintains that we indeed, we want ductile iron pipe.
I'll move that. We accept the minutes from November 5.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Oh, wait. One abstention, sorry. One abstention.
Okay.
Okay. Cases today. We are going to move the diversified properties to the front of the line.
That's a motion I'll second.
Yes, that's a motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move that to the front of the line. Diversified properties, case number 15-25, 8201 Rock Riffle Road, lot split. Mr. Paskey?
Mr. Paris, plain, clear, that's simple. If you look at the fifth page, basically, that lot is being split almost in half. And a new lot is being created, so that's why it's here. But it does need all the requirements for fronting with the death ratio. Has been signed off by the Health Department and the purvey has been mathematically checked for access by engineers on it, so it looks good. You may notice a house that is on the site right now, but the proposed lot split line kind of goes almost right through the middle of it. That house is no longer there, so that would not issue. Anything other than that?
Trying to remember where on Rock Riffle this is. Is it on the hillside? Is that the up and down?
Just prior to Clark's Cave, on the right side of the road.
Oh, okay.
Prior to Clark's.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I know. A little uphill of it. Okay, great. Okay. Again, it's outside the state limits, so it's just because it's in the three mile area.
Where's the spurt? It's not? I don't understand why the numbers are different. It says 8201 Rock Riffle Room.
8201.
8201.
Okay. So this big parcel, is the division at the bottom of it?
This parcel right here is being split pretty much right through the middle of it here.
Okay.
These are the split. Right. There'll be a 2.40 and a 3.06 acre.
And this house is gone?
That house is gone. It's been demolished. The other walls are further down on Rock Riffle Road.
My only question was, the Health Department, does that mean it's a buildable lot?
Yeah. Chuck Schumer signed off on both lots. They received the soil science that we had Terry Priest from Corning did all the soil They reviewed it and they signed off. It's on the, it's okay to transfer. So we're working with the Health Department to design appropriate systems for both lots right now.
Okay.
And we're attempting to get advanced construction on the larger, the two lots, 3.06, once we have approval.
Is the entire piece in the city?
None of it's in the city.
I didn't think so.
No, no. Ten to three miles.
It's only as the crow flies.
We're doing the three mile limit. Got it.
As far as I know, there's no part of Rock Riffle in the city at this point.
No.
On the other side of the river.
I think there's city water.
There is.
Lot of rock riffle.
Really?
If I'm not mistaken.
Under the river?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, I think to that first house that was called Sarshay's.
Andy's told me it's only an inch and a half, two inch line. I think it does leak.
Oh, wonderful.
And he doesn't know how.
We're not planning for the Rock Riffle order immediately.
So this will be Gliac's water then?
Gliac's already in place. AET already in place.
Okay. I would make the motion that we approve case 1525, the lot split on 8201 Rock Riffle Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you kindly. The most efficient moment I've ever experienced.
Except for being here, which he gave it to me two weeks ago, then I forgot about it.
Where is it? Oh. Now, now, I'm sorry. Who?
Guy in a white truck.
Oh, yeah. That's our guy. Okay.
It would go nicely with the rest of the Dallas. It would go around. You can go around.
Yep. Okay.
Moving on to case number 15-23, Athens Cycle Shop, Columbus Road, Title 41. Mr. Paskey?
You remember this coming forward a couple of weeks ago through a preliminary. The proposed project is a one-story, 11,100 square foot pole building, storage facility for the uncrating and assembly and warehousing of ATVs, motorcycles, et cetera, for the Athens Sports Cycle located just north of this property at 165 Columbus Road. The proposed project is located within a B3 zone and is a permissible use. The proposed project has been reviewed and approved by the Athens Wellhead Protection Team. As I stated, it does meet all the zoning requirements, setback requirements, et cetera. It's all pretty much commercial around it except for to the rear of it, which would be to the west is the river itself. There really were no comments. The fire chief didn't have any comments. The police captain did indicate that he had a concern, but it was just something he wanted to throw out there, and I have shared that with Dave and Moran, the architects, about the possibility of people breaking and entering through the rear of the building through pole building structures, that they may want to take some extra security measures in those regards. But that's up to them whether they wish to do so.
I see the reasons for either getting a, so a car can go around, police car can patrol around, or concrete in the back.
Or concrete, or barricade, or plywood, or whatever you want to do, so that someone just can't cut through the metal. But it's not a requirement that we can make them do.
No, true.
So. And then Andy, Director of Engineering Public Works, he didn't really have any comments in regards to this of any concerns as well.
I think he'd want some more details. That's about it.
Yeah. Some small details, and I think that those, what I do know, those have been taken care of.
And floodplain? I think I see.
They will need to be one foot above base flood elevation, and the drawings indicate that as such, and they will have to submit for a special flood hazard permit at the time when they're coming to get their use permit.
What is the difference between these two proposed curb cuts?
The difference?
Distance.
On the distance? Seventy-four feet or no, I'd say maybe eighty, ninety feet apart?
You're talking about the curb cuts?
Yes.
Okay. Entrances?
I guess I'd like to say that I'd like to reserve the openings under additional review. Shouldn't really affect the Title 41 processing today.
There's really no curb cuts out there now.
Opening permit. I think right now it's continuously gravel all the way across it, and the whole width of the site.
That's what it is right now. We're trying to get, bring it a little more organized.
And that's what I'm saying. We're looking at Columbus Road as a future corridor that's developed, and we don't want it to become an East State Street kind of issue or.
I drive in and out each day on that road, and I think there should be a middle lane the whole way. There's the water building. I see all the problems along the way of clearing that kind of have a turning lane in the center of the road. And the one curb cut is really just, is rarely used to bring in the crates of the product. And again, those deliveries are always off hours early in the morning before anybody arrives, or traffic picks up on the road. The other one, again, it's not, nothing, nothing is sold there. It's just a few people that work there. We're showing more parking spots than we actually will inhabit the building. So commercially, product is delivered down the street to their other buildings and assembled there.
So.
No.
Go ahead. Oh, okay. I assume that four bicycles are required. I always forget the requirements on that. The other thing is, I think last time I'd asked if there's a raised dock, and you said it was lowered down. It was actually ramped down.
Correct.
So two things occurred to me when I was looking at this plan. One is that they will require, again, even if the delivery is late at night, a back end of the semi truck, right?
Correct.
A back end. And the other one, of course, this is the, the actual level of the bottom of this ramp, concrete ramp, to get to the dock will actually be under the floodplain.
Right.
And that's not going to be a problem, I assume?
No.
Drainage, et cetera?
Well, drainage in it, yes.
Okay. That's the only question that happened.
That's why I'd asked for, about the lighting on the front was my concern about backing in in the early morning when a lot of people are coming in to the university to work. And I thought some extra lighting around.
Well, I've since looked, since I drive in there every morning, most of those poles right in that area are all lit currently. They're all well lit, and the owner is certainly willing to put in more if that's not adequate to accommodate your concerns. I talked to them about that, and we're going to have them certainly mounted on the side of the building, wall sconces on the building itself, so.
So I would like to have people who are coming into Athens have a little bit more visibility of something that was backing into, is going to take a while to back it into the driveway, and I just thought that might be an added thing.
Right.
Well, this is usually on the straightaway, so it's not.
Especially in the fall and things like that.
But they would be coming back. I anticipate they'd come out and be turning left to go back out onto the highway.
Yes.
Your large trailers.
Correct.
And then each time Athens Sports Cycle comes to get something, they'll, they'll be doing left. But they shouldn't have to back in during the day.
No, they're a much smaller vehicle. They're, they're bringing a couple crates at a time over to their, their building to assemble it.
Ms. Bain, did you have a question?
I do, I have too. Would you call this assembly of material?
No.
They're just unwrapping?
Strictly warehouse. They're actually, and that was an issue that was brought up about cardboard site. I asked them about that. They literally take the cardboard crates or the pallets over to their other structure before they.
It's only storage right now.
It's, it's totally storage.
Okay, now, I think, and I'm probably not correct on this, but I think I detect, the building is very close to the front lot line, is it?
Yes.
I mean, like, in one place, it almost looks like it's over, but that's just.
Yeah.
So the, the building is, and the right of way is how wide in here?
It varies all the way down through Columbus Road.
Like I said, right there. I only, I only want to know about that spot right there, which I assume, you know, and to, to talk about raising, I mean, increasing the drivability of Columbus Road, if this thing's sitting on the edge of the right of way, and we try to reclaim it, or somebody tries to, not me.
Well, we're, we're what?
But I just want to know about the right of way.
We're three feet, thirty feet back from the edge of the existing road currently?
Yeah, but you know right of way, right?
Yeah.
And what's the right of way is what I want to know.
Well, if, if thirty foot back, you assume to the center of the road, then they're probably, it's probably a hundred foot wide at that point, fifty feet either way to the center line of the road.
Yeah. That road's been noted, had about seventy feet of right of way.
Yeah. It's all over the place. Every lot's different.
So it would be helpful to have this if we're, we have this future vision of redoing this area.
The bottom line is, it's on the property, and B3 allows for zero foot, zero foot front setback.
This is a, a planning question, you know? It's not maxing out what, what could be, maxing out what could be done on the property. I just want to know, since it was my assignment to do this in another time, where this sits with respect to the width of the road, which Mr. Moran said he'd like to see with a center area, you know? So if it's going to grow, I mean, I'm just trying to do diligence here. How would it say on the deed where the right of way is?
Well, we can figure it out, but what I'm getting at is.
No, no, I don't want you to figure it out. I want to know where it is, because if it's a lot, it's not part of a subdivision. You know, you need to, I mean, it seems like diligence to know where.
In this situation, the right of way width is the front property line. A lot of lots on Columbus Road are not like that. This one is.
And how do you?
It appears that the front of the lot is the edge of the right of way. So if you have thirty foot from the edge of the pavement, I mean, if you look on SD1, and I mean, I don't have, there's not a dimension there, and maybe Clinton can speak to it more for me, but it's, you can see how the right of way on that is all over the place on this. There's plenty of room at that location for width or expansion and growth of the, of Columbus Road itself.
It would be very close, though, wouldn't it, to the?
Depending on which side of the road you want to widen on. If you look at the SD1.2.
You know, we're not even widening it yet. I'm just trying to establish what we should think about in the future if this is going across the road into a new property, if it's going to have, be elevated or not elevated by flood. I don't, haven't figured that one out yet, but I guess I want to just, and I don't want, I drive by it almost every day, and I have no problem with it. I just wanted to know if we're protecting.
If it's three lane road, it's forty feet approximately, right? Twenty-four plus the middle turning lane?
Thirty-six feet.
Thirty-six feet.
Well, I'm a veteran of East State Street widening. That's where I'm coming from on this, because we made all kinds of little decisions over time with bad information, and we ended up with a road. But it was very costly and very, people were, are probably still angry. But anyway, they do stay angry.
Definitely the right of way.
I have to assume the right of way is very close to the building front and the lot roof. Just because if you look at the utilities there, basically, we have power lines as well as sanitary in there.
And on the other side of the street, I believe it's paved, right up to the edge of the road, isn't it?
There's only a tarmac on the.
Yeah, I think you're right.
In the manner of East State Street, you know, it's. New diligence is on. Okay. Undone.
Flood elevation looks like two feet up. Is that what I'm seeing?
It's actually only six, is it six inches higher than our existing?
Look down.
I think we'll have to raise our building six inches from the existing.
I think floodplain requires one foot.
Yeah, right.
And you're up.
It's adequate.
What?
It's adequate.
It's adequate.
But they have not, will be submitting a permit for flood review once, once, but their proposed base, or base or elevation is one foot above.
Okay.
Water from the stuff into the street, are they going to have a trench? We probably didn't mention it, did we?
Well, actually, one of the things, storm drainage, Andy's review base.
Yep.
He wants to know the elevations and relate to proposed curb cut, related to surrounding pavement.
So how do we know?
So it's going to have to be put in. It's going to, it's going to have to be some kind of.
Well, it just runs into the river. We should make that very clear.
Oh, no. What did the Wellhead Protection people?
We, we reviewed this.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
And we approved it in terms of, because it's.
It's cardboard.
Yeah, they're basically just boxed units that will be taken offsite, so that there's, shouldn't be any secondary containment issues.
No.
Cardboard all the time. Cardboard and pallets.
And if they start putting together over there and putting oil in them over there, then, you know, Mr. Cooper does an annual inspection on every property that's in the wellhead, so he'll, he'll catch them.
They're not going to be doing it.
That is correct. If they were to do that, they would be in violation, and Mike would catch them.
But if an impervial surface will run down where they are there.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah.
Okay. Did anyone want to make a motion?
Why should I do it? Somebody else can do something.
Christie?
Okay. I'm making a motion that we approve case number 1524.
No, we're trying to.
Oh, 23, sorry. Title 41 for Athens Cycle Shop on Columbus Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that was unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Case number 15-24, Donwood Ford, East State Street, Title 41. Mr. Paskey?
Again, this came two weeks ago, I believe it was, for preliminary view, or four weeks ago, whatever.
Communication there.
That's correct for communication. This is a proposed project, it's a one-story, 18,055 square foot, four dealership and service garage. Proposed project is on a portion of a parcel that was designated out of the floodway and floodplain with a letter of map revision approximately five years ago. This portion of the property is owned B3 with the residual of the property's own, either open space or manufacturing. The residual of the property is within the floodway with very little potential, if any, to ever be developed. The proposed project is a permissible use within the B3 zone. It will be, have to go to Shade Tree, as did, well, the other one, by the way. Both of them have to go to Shade Tree next Thursday. The, the site on this one's a little bit trickier because the site is, actually has multiple zoning. But the part that was in the Lomar that was done in 2010 was, is the B3 section, so like I said, this entire lot is within B3, and it is a permissible use. It meets all the other bulk controls in regards to setbacks and lock coverage, et cetera. Fire chief had a couple of comments as to where he wanted the fire hydrants located. Those have been put in as requested on the site, one to the, basically the southeast corner and one to the northwest corner of the building area. And that has been taken care of. He's also requested the water shut-off be, to be located externally, and I, looking at the drawing, I saw a valve by the rear service coming in, so I assume that that's been taken care of. Any other items on here from his standpoint, can be, they'll determine, they'll work with them as the building's getting built, as to where they want the lockbox and alarm to be located. Police didn't have any comments other than exterior lighting. They do have adequate exterior lighting on a car lot, and I saw it, it is on the site plan, and I would think they would want to have adequate lighting on a car lot. Like I said, the entire project is to be built within the 2010 letter of map revision area. They cannot go without, out of that area for a number of reasons, and most importantly, FEMA requirements, and second, outside of that area is a different zone. It would not be a permissible use, so they, they're well aware of those situations, and we've dealt with them on that, and everything's okay.
Okay, so a couple of questions. One, of course, this is, this entire lot is inside the city, right?
Entire lot is within the city, yes.
The other one, of course, is this will be at the end of the cul-de-sac of that access road.
Correct.
And that will have to be modified somehow.
Well, that's one of Andy's comments, that they show a detail from the East State Street Access Road, an amountable curb to go over that, and that detail has been provided, and they will be doing that. So that was one of his comments. So the cul-de-sac in essence will stay there, and then they'll have a driveway coming off of that with a mountable curb, much like all University Estates is, you know? Then the curb, the curb itself will not be cut out.
Is there any discussion about impact of this? This would be a cul-de-sac again, impact for the development and wear and tear on this particular cul-de-sac with construction? Is there any dialogue that's occurred on that?
Andy's not said anything to me about it, no.
Okay. In terms of lighting, also, the other question that would arise is whether there'd be too much lighting. We do have guidelines for how much, how many lumens we need to.
Right. It'll be down, the downlighting requirements and so on, so, yeah, they'll have to be met.
I just wanted to state that that roadway was built with ARC money. That's a solid roadway.
Yes, I'm aware of that. But I, yeah, I know, it was going to be named something different a long time ago. And the reason why I asked about the lot being in the city, because again, there will be a request for signage along the way, and then the question becomes, is it signage for a two-lane road or a four-lane road?
I need to be for a two-lane road, and they also will have to put any sign out on the, the main sign that's already there at the access road coming off of 50.
Which is Holzer with all the.
Unless they petition to put a sign like the hotel did, their own little sign.
And that would require variance from the Zonable Appeals?
Yes, they did.
I'm just asking the questions. That's all.
So they'll have to meet all those same, same guidelines, and it is a two-lane road at that location, yeah. So if they come in there and wish to have a hundred-foot-long sign that can be seen off of 50, that'll take a variance.
Okay. And so this is going to be designated 2020, 65, East State Street? Is that the location?
As of right now, that's the number I put it in. When they, when they start building, I'll have to do an address request for them, and I'll look at it a little bit more closely at that point, but that's the number we're playing with right now, and I think it fits in line with everything.
Okay. And I was aware, Andy's consideration for the sewer requirements.
The irony of this is, do they need to have any bike racks?
Yes, they do. Yeah, I think I saw it in here.
You ride a bike to buy a car.
People may do that. It happens.
We talked about that. Is, is Iran have one? How you going to get out?
Six. Six, six bike spaces required here.
There you go. Ms. Bain?
One last question. It seemed to me that when we built that sewer out there from Holzer Inn, that there were some limitations to it.
There are limitations. We had a discussion as staff last Monday about some of those limitations. From what I understand of Andy Stone is that we were pretty, pretty close to bottlenecking with some of the lift station, the horse manes there.
That's right.
Any more development would probably require an upgrade of some of those.
That is correct. Pretty much, if anyone builds on the lot next to Holzer that's vacant right now, the size of this lift station out in front of these buildings will have to be upsized, and if anyone wishes to build where the.
Renzelli.
Renzelli and Holzer Dock property is, if they either have to get an easement to go through the rear of the McBee Building into that lift station, or if they wish to go into the lift station, or into the horse main out front, they'll be responsible for increasing a four-inch line to a six-inch line from a, from a lift station to a gravity manhole, approximately 175-foot length on the other side of the street, just down a little bit, close to in front of the Pepsi Building, so.
It is noted in this that the capacity of the lift station is being reviewed, so.
Yes.
I don't know if he has a final on that or not, but that'll.
It says square feet, probably not, not as much sewage demand as some others, unless they're putting their car washing.
Well, they.
We had that discussion too. Yes, detailing cars, et cetera.
They do.
Would that be storm sewer? You never know.
What we're seeing is, we are hitting, you know, the edge of what we can develop over there without major upgrades, and again, it comes down to potassium fees and how we discuss that.
And the valley's very narrow, so they're working much.
The unfortunate thing about car washing the cars, it's gray water versus what you call the other black water. So it's not as heavy as a load on a lift station, as far as making it run more, but.
Yeah, volume versus strength, I think.
Yes, there you go.
It could do retention and then pump it later.
How tall will the sign be, the main sign be in the property?
You mean on the building itself?
Yeah, well, yeah, by the overpass.
He means the free span standing.
The sign permit, they haven't submitted that yet.
We haven't submitted anything yet.
But it'll be, it's only going to be allowed to be fifty square foot in, in size, and I think fifty feet high is our code out there.
Although on the building, they have certain sizes.
Yes, I thought that's what you're talking about, yeah.
Matt, the process, if the engineer, city engineer comes back and indicates that it has to be upgraded to the sanitary lift station or what have you, that's just, since it's already noted in the, here?
If they want to have it there, they'll have to do it, some, but, yeah, I mean, apparently, and I wasn't aware of this, and Clinton was informing me, that there's a manhole out front, that they're going into the manhole, then it's a gravity feed from the manhole to the lift station, actually headed east, hits the lift station, then pumps it back west, so, and so they're going into the manhole right now, and then it will gravity feed east, how far? Couple hundred feet at the most?
Yeah, it's, our line's one hundred and eighty-seven feet, so I'd say probably another two hundred.
Yeah, so, unique setup there, but that's the way it is.
Mm-hmm, and I see that Andy did, the engineer did say, ask about right-of-way issues in terms of existing manhole and other portions, okay.
Right.
Bain?
I'm going to move to accept, C, T, four, one, one, five, oh, 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 four, oh, one, two, with the provision, okay, fifteen twenty-four, also known as, that the developer paid for the most efficient sewer solution, if necessary, including right-of-way acquisition.
Okay, I'll second that.
Paige, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Communications, Mr. Loeb?
Just a couple of things this afternoon. At the last, at the November meeting, the first meeting in November, I've given an update on the Armory EPA studies, but they were in process at that point. We do have preliminary information back on that second, that phase-two study, it has not, I don't have the document in hand yet, but what we were told was pretty good news, all things considered, there was, we assumed some asbestos and some lead issues in the building. However, the cleanup cost for that was anticipated to be total of less than twenty-five thousand dollars, which was really good news, as you, you may be aware, may not, that we did initially have a public hearing scheduled for this meeting, because we were gearing up to apply for a federal grant to do cleanup work, but once every study came back and they said how, the amount, they said we wouldn't even be competitive for a grant, because they were looking for grants up to like two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars, so we decided to table that application. Where or when we'll do cleanup, though, we have not addressed that issue yet, but nothing major, like I said, is, is what we expected, they did do those core samples around the perimeter of the building to check the soils, and there was, everything came back negative, so that was good to hear.
I see they've already started, this morning I went by, and I saw people hanging out by the armory side, took a loop around, doing the reporting.
Yeah, I believe the order worked, that City Council appropriated funds for last month, or earlier this, or last month, that work was commenced this morning, to do brick work on, and tuck work. And I believe that's all this morning, or afternoon.
How's the master plan for the campus, I haven't been able to attend any of those?
I thought the meetings went really well, I only, as far as the open houses go, the only one I attended was the cities that we had on Tuesday night, very sparsely attended, I think there's only four or five community members who appeared, which I read to be a good thing, I suppose, because the first meeting that the campus planners hosted at the community center about four or five months ago, there was at least seventy-five or a hundred people showed up, and so.
Are they all done, scheduled? I thought there was one today, when I.
They had two on campus yesterday.
Yesterday, okay.
And I believe they're going to be taking it, presenting to the Board of Trustees at their January meeting. Documents relating to that meeting have to be, I'm not sure when they have to be posted online for, for public consumption, but two, two weeks to a month prior to that, I believe.
Okay.
But I didn't hear too many significant concerns about what they were presenting as far as community-wide, there's some traffic, you know, transportation issues that we will need to talk in greater detail with them about, but otherwise, I thought it was pretty, very pleased with, more or less pleased with the plan.
Okay.
Mr. Paskey?
For the zoning appeals, Tuesday night, two cases, one of them was to the case that was tabled from last month in regards to the, name of the place, on Carpenter, their, their church, the venue.
Venue, yeah.
The venue.
Oh, parking, parking.
Parking requirements, and they were requesting a variance, they're going to, they've changed that they're asking for a variance for the five off-street, off-site parking spaces leased across the street, and then five on-site, so that's what their request is now. And then the other case, and it's one that we may want to look at in the future, because this is the second time it's come up, is the signage, directional signage on hospital property. They have a series of thirteen to fifteen signs they're wishing to replace that are directional related, that are larger than what our code allows. They required a variance a couple of years ago, and they replaced all the signs at that time, larger than what's allowed, and now they're wishing to do it again with the rebranding with Ohio Health, so the signs are a little bit bigger this time than they were then, but, so that's the two cases that are coming on there. In regards to next meeting, two weeks, I don't know the status right now, I have eight or nine lot splits laying on my desk, I have not looked through them. Again, seven or so of these are the A E P properties that I were talking to, that I told you in on a while back, they came in to me last week sometime. I don't think any of them are going to require anything, because I think most of them are continuous contiguous transfers of land, but I, I don't know, and, but I do know that